Good morning, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, July 19th, 2016. It's 9:00 AM. We're at the Palm Coast City Hall for the regularly scheduled meeting of the Palm Coast City Council. If you please rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible) allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Mayor Nets.
Here.
Vice Mayor Shipley.
Here.
Councilmember Di Lorenzo.
Here.
Councilmember McGuire.
Here.
Councilmember Nobiel.
Here.
Mayor, all members are present.
Thank you very much. First item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of the July 5th City Council meeting and the July 12th City Council workshop. Are there any additions, corrections, or is there a motion for approval? Who to approve?
Second.
Second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries that objection. Agenda item number two, presentation on the traveling Vietnam memorial wall event. Mr. Landon.
Mayor, City Council, I think we have a special guest here. Mr. Parker?
Yes, good morning. Mayor, Councilman?
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Raymond A. Parker. I actually live in Flagler Beach. However, today I am here as an emissary for the Veterans Advisory Council of Flagler County, for the Military Officers Association of America, and for the Steering Committee for a program that is going to be presented on November 11th over the course of three days, that weekend, for Veterans Day at the Flagler County Airport. The reason I'm standing here before you today is I would like this city, on behalf of our group that I mentioned, I would like to have the city consider and make a decision for this one event consolidating or bringing together the cities in Flagler County for Veterans Day. It's a special event this year because of the traveling Veterans Memorial Wall that is going to be there. And what I'd like to do is share a little bit of information about that and certainly answer questions after that. I do have three slides I'd like to show at the end of this if I may. Let me begin by saying that 46 years ago today, I was in Vietnam. I was an airborne ranger infantry combat officer, leading a platoon of American soldiers and a platoon of Army of the Republic of Vietnam veterans in heavy aggressive combat. I came back from that and enabled me to stand here before you today. However, 58,272 people died in Vietnam, serving this country and did not come back. On Veterans Day, we have an opportunity here in Flagler County, a special opportunity, to honor the people who did not come back and indeed to honor those veterans who served all around the world during that period of time and those who so strongly support our values this year. I mention this year because it's unique. I said it's unique. The Vietnam Traveling Memorial Wall, it's a special name, is being set up and displayed over at the airport. I'll show you shortly where it's going to be laid out in the airport, right off Route 100. It is actually a entity that supports this. It's the Vietnam Veterans of Brevard. It's a traveling wall. It goes around the country. It's been around the state and some of the local cities, not close to us, but around the state. It's a very nice representation. It is a three-fifths size of the Vietnam Wall in Washington. I don't know how many of you have been to that wall, but that's a very impressive memorial. It's three-fifths the size. It is 300 feet long, approximately the length of a football field. It'll be set up at a little bit of an angle to replicate the memorial in Washington and it will have all of the names there on the wall, the 58,272. A little bit of background on this. Through the years, I've had some involvement and know many of you because of it with the disabled American veterans. I have learned when we've had different holidays, whether it be Memorial Day, July 4th, even Veterans Day, that sometimes the cities have separate memorials to the veterans or programs. What I'm asked is for a decision that that for this year be brought together because of the importance of that wall. The traveling wall will be here. It is being transported, set up, displayed, taken down by professionals who do that with the assistance of the veteran groups in this county that have been orchestrated through Salvati Gliano and the Veterans Advisory Council. Again, I'm just an emissary speaking on their behalf this morning. In other words, nothing has to be done. It'll be brought here, it'll be set up. Some of the veterans groups will supply some labor to get it up. Oversight and coordination is being conducted by the Steering Committee, the Veterans Advisory Council of Flagler County, and very importantly, airport management. There's some public relations that's involved with this. Also, we have to look to the layout there at the airport. I said to you that this wall has been traveling around, this monument has been traveling around the country. There is quite a bit of experience that has been gained with it. It serves as a guide, that experience serves as a guide to a very comprehensive presentation. It's very well done, it's professionally done, it's well orchestrated, it's put up, it's taken down, and guess what? It's all for free. I don't demean it because of that. The way that this was brought in is the county, Flagler County, signed a contract with the Vietnam Veterans Group that brought this to Brevard. We arranged it would come in with monies that were donated to the various veteran groups through the Veterans Advisory Council. It was collected, it's there available paying for it. Over the past weeks, I made a point of visiting and it was very good. For example, Mayor Nets, you allowed me to speak with you just for a few minutes to get the word out a little bit what we're looking at and what we're asking for before I brought it here before the council. The county fully endorses this program, they know the value of it, they know the success in the past. Simultaneous with this wall being set up over at the airport, there will be what is called Freedom Fest 2016. It honors and extols that wall and what we as veterans, what I as a veteran have done over the years. The purpose is to celebrate Veterans Day, the purpose is to honor Vietnam veterans, and the purpose is for those visitors to enjoy Veterans Day 2016. There will be military guest speakers, as has been done in the past. To my knowledge, we don't have a specific one selected at the moment. They're being invited. We have to get the right person that will be able to come and speak for us, but hopefully it'll be a person who's a Vietnam veteran and could certainly talk to what we did over there. The Vietnam-era military aircraft, there are going to be two genres of them. There will be flights of them, the helicopters, for example, Wings Over Flagler. You've seen these aircraft flying around here at the same time. There are going to be static displays of the aircraft, as well as there is going to be material from Vietnam in sort of a museum presentation that people will be able to see. It is a three-day program. Veterans Day, November 11th is a Friday. The actual official program is at 10:00 AM. It starts at 10:00 AM. There'll be speakers. It'll be a short program, so it'll be Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. But during those days, Freedom Fest, which is being positioned as an opportunity to celebrate the holiday, but it'll be bringing business in there. There will be vendors and other activities that are going on. On Saturday night, there will be a Rolling Stones tribute concert, which is applicable. During the '60s, when I was in the service, the Rolling Stones were certainly a popular group. It'll replicate what transpired then. There'll be the Elvis Presley Traveling Museum there, which are going to be very, very entertaining. I note again that it is a free program. It is all set up, it is already operating, we're going forward. I'm not early addressing this right now. It's going to take a lot of logistical coordination. It is free admission for people to come. It is also free parking. I'm going to show you shortly these slides, but the way that it's set up, it is there will be travel, of course, off State Route 100, driving in, they'll be parking right on the premises, and also over at Flagler Palm Coast High School for additional parking. I might mention that at this program, there will be oversight. Roy Seeger from the airport is very instrumental in this, and there is a layout of what the program is going to look like. And if I may, I'd like to just show you these slides.
Thank you. If you help me with the first slide.
I know it's hard to see this a little bit, but if you look at the slides there, this is just a depiction, the key point, I don't know if I can point it with this laser or not. If you can see the cursor, there's a little V or chevron at the airport on the premises. It's important that yellow chevron indicates where the wall will be. It will be in a separate area to maintain the honor of what is appropriate for that wall. That will be to the far west of all of the activity. It'll be cordoned off by some plants or some sort of barriers, appropriate barriers. And then off to the right, to the east, there will be different activity areas. There will be vendors in that area, there will be food served, and there are also going to be the displays and the rides, the helicopter rides and aircraft rides which are there. Something else that we have planned to have at this celebration is important. Congress of the United States approved striking, that is making pins, which are indicative of service during the Vietnam War era. That's actually from 1959 through 1975. At that program, during the formal program, our group is arranging to have these pins distributed to Vietnam veterans. It's going to be a little bit difficult because we're expecting a lot of people, but with the help of our congressman, Congressman Ron DeSantis, we have sourced these pins. They will be given to each individual who served in Vietnam, will have some way of identifying who those people were who served during the Vietnam era. I want to make that clear, they didn't have to be in Vietnam. Can you put the next one out there? On the, thank you for helping me with these. On the next slide, it's, if, actually, we skipped one there. Can you get that one? On the back of that pin is, I guess maybe it's not in there, don't even worry about it. Go to the next one then, please. On the back of the pin, it also just says, "The United States thanks veterans for service during that period of time." The last slide here, and then I'm finished. I'd like you just to look at a representation of what this wall is. This site, as you see here, is from, it's copper, it's all rates reserved. The traveling wall uses this as an indication of what the wall will look like at the airport. Of course, it's going to be out on the pavement there. It's why those we discussed in the Steering Committee may be having some plants around things of that nature to channel people through the area. It'll be an opportunity for all who visit to come and see the wall. Let me just close with saying that I am very familiar, and Salvati Gliano assists me in it, with the number of veterans in Flagler County, the majority of whom are in the Palm Coast area, north of State Route 100. There are 15,400 and some, I'll just say it like that, veterans in Flagler County. The majority of those veterans, it's approximately 64% of veterans in Flagler County are Vietnam era, as am I. They're my age, they're probably very interested in this program. I'm mentioning that number because we think that there's going to be a lot of participation. I will just close by saying, thank you very much, you can close that. I will just close by saying that the reason I came here is to ask for your consideration, your support, and your decision to participate in this program on Veterans Day. I am well aware that earlier in the morning, there are some very special activities that are going to be going on early in the morning, I believe at Heroes Park. I think it still can be a very valuable thing, not only to service those, participate in those, because it complements this wall, but also to come to our presentation of the Vietnam Wall, and I ask you to make that decision today.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Any questions for the presenter? We'll take that up later in the morning.
Thank you.
Thank you.[1003.75][1003.75](applause) Agenda item number three, presentation of the award to the Water Boys for the Top Ops National Championship of the American Waterworks Association.
I think Cindy's going to handle this one. Again.
Again, again.[1024.83][1024.83](laughter)
Going to have to get a bigger plaque.
Of the winners here with me, and this morning, we are proud again to recognize the Palm Coast, City of Palm Coast Water Boys team from the Utility Department for winning the Top Ops National Championship of the American Waterworks Association. They had their conference this year in Chicago, and they changed up some of the rules this year to try to make it a little harder for us to win. They added a lot of math, and I've heard it's pretty hard math and difficult math, and it's very exciting. This is our sixth time winning the national championship. They do it in a brain bowl format, so just imagine the five of you sitting there and having to like beat the buzzer to be the one to answer the question first. They ask a lot of questions on things like, in addition to math, chemistry, hydrology, water distribution, public health, plant maintenance, and other topics. Our team is Fred Greiner, Tom Martens, Pete Rousseau, and they are coached by Jim Hogan. They defeated 18 teams from across the United States and Canada to win the national championship. We came in second place last year, and then we won the state, I shouldn't say we, they, won the state championship this spring, which is what enabled them to go to nationals. We're really proud of it. Their championship really speaks to the quality of our utility department and the quality of our water. And I did bring some copies of our brand-new, hot-off-the-press annual water report. They're in the back on the table, next to the rubber ducks, if anybody would like to pick one up. Has a lot of good information about some of the capital projects that we're doing this year related to the utility department. And we're very proud of them, and Fred is the captain of the team, and he's going to speak, but before that, I wanted to make a special surprise announcement, and that is that this year, the Water Boys are being named the Grand Marshals of the Starlight Parade.[1172.08][1172.08](applause) So come December, they will lead off our parade, and then in addition to us knowing that they're the national champions, the whole city of Palm Coast will know as well. So I think Fred wants to speak, and then we'll do a photo op.
We just want to thank you guys very much for allowing us to participate in these events. There was 18 teams that competed. All of us put in a great deal of effort, including the teams that participate. So when we go to these things, even though we've won it six times, it's not an easy thing. We, you know, we have a lot of great competition. So for us, when we got back, I mean, the day after, we started studying, and we haven't stopped since. So we plan on hoping to bring back another one next year, and we're excited to be the Grand Marshals of the Starlight Parade. That was news to me, so that's cool, but we want to thank you guys very much. So, thank you.
Thank you.[1234.21][1234.21](applause) Come on, Phil. I'll be right behind John. Come up front. Hey, Coach.
Best come back without the trophy. We say you're all wet.
Agenda item number four, resolution approving a final plat, Grand Landings Phase 2B replat. Mr. Landon.
Mayor, City Council, this is the next phase of Grand Landings. You've seen a couple others in the past. This is a plat, which means we're at the final stages. They're very close to start going vertical with new homes. And right now, I'm stalling as Ida is trying to...
Well, I'll help. This is quasi-judicial, so if there's been any ex parte communications prior today, those should be disclosed for the record. Councilmembers, any ex parte communications?
None.
None. Thank you.
Best I can do. With that, Ida, it's all yours.
Good morning, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Ida Mune. I'm a planner with the Planning Division. I'm here to present application 3100. It's proposed subdivision for Grand Landings Phase 2B. The location of this proposed subdivision is in southern Palm Coast. It's west of Seminole Woods Boulevard, it's north of Grand Landings Boulevard, and north of Starling Boulevard within the Grand Landing subdivision. It's also south of the airport. The future land use of this proposed subdivision is residential. The zoning of this proposed subdivision is master plan development. This is the proposed subdivision. It's 23 lots. All of these lots meet the Land Development Code requirements. The current status is that a site development permit was issued in September of 2005. The infrastructure is complete for Phase 2B. A 4,200 bond for monument placement, as well as a maintenance bond, is required prior to the recording of the final plat. With that, staff is recommending to adopt the resolution approving the final plat for Grand Landings Phase 2B replat and authorizing the mayor to execute the plat, subject to the condition of the city approving and accepting the required bonds prior to the final plat.
Council questions?
Your Honor, what bonds are required?
There are two bonds, the maintenance bond and a $4,200 bond for monument placement.
Who secures the bonds?
The Finance Department and the city.
It's surety. It's like an insurance policy.
Right.
The developer is required to go out and find a surety that's authorized on the state of Florida and acceptable to the city of Palm Coast, to provide insurance that in the event that any, the infrastructure that is supporting the development of this land will work and is developed appropriately.
Thank you.
Other questions? Signal one, a lot of them in the public, any from the public wish to be heard on agenda item number four. Signal one approached the podium, we'll close the public portion, move back to council. Additional questions, comments, or a motion to approve? Who to approve?
Second.
Move in seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries that objection. Agenda item number five, resolution 2016 approving the 2017 state legislative priorities. Mr. Landon.
Mayor, City Council, each year you're asked to establish priorities of issues that are statewide significance, so that when we interact with our state delegation and our regional partners, everybody's aware of what issues you believe are important to us from a state standpoint. Bill Fauquins always leads you through this, and he will do that again today.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. At the last workshop, we discussed the draft legislative priorities. Up on your screen in your agenda packet, I've made the requested changes, and it's being brought today before you for your consideration. Of course, the last legislative priority is basically, all of these are up to your discretion on which are adopted, but they're all clued, and we're just awaiting direction on which priorities you'd like to include in the resolution today.
Council, you've had a chance to review the proposed changes. Are there any comments, any changes that you'd like to see before we submit these to the county, who will in turn submit them to the Regional Planning Council for publication?
I like the way they're written.
Like the way they're written. Any other comments?
No.
Well, questions? We'll assume that's a motion in just a moment, but before we take that motion, any from the public wish to be heard on these priorities. Now again, these are priorities that we submit to the county. The county in turn incorporates these priorities into what they perceive as the regional priorities for Flagler County. Those are submitted to the Northeast Regional Council. They are published as part of a document that represents the regional priorities, and this document is shared with our legislators, and of course, copies for us when we approach our legislators and ask them to make changes or additions or modifications to how the state of Florida functions. So with that being said, we have someone at the podium. Give us your name, limit your contribution to three minutes.
Ted Carroll. As far as this marijuana stuff going on, wouldn't it be, might as well to wait until the safety unit makes a decision on it? Because they've been hashing it over for, what, for two months now, three months, four months? Wouldn't it be wiser, see what they say, see what, you know, the brains have to say about this? And then submit it to the county, then the county, then the county submit it to the city, to Tallahassee. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Next speaker. Signal one approached the podium, we'll close the public portion, move back to council. Let me comment on the revised statewide framework for marijuana. The Flagler County Law Enforcement Coordinating Committee and a subcommittee thereof have been discussing alternatives for criminal citations against individuals possessing small amounts of marijuana, underage alcohol consumption, and similar things that are treated as misdemeanors. The committee... Mr. Roy, you said you were happy the way they're written. Would you like to offer a motion to approve?
I do indeed offer a motion to approve the recommendations to the county as written here, as rewritten here.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries without objection. Agenda item number six, resolution to establish the proposed maximum millage rate for fiscal year two thousand and seventeen and set the first public hearing date on the budget. Mr. Landon.
Mayor, City Council, you've seen a number of presentations regarding our budgets we do each year. It's a year-round process for us. This is your first action item of the year. In September, you'll be asked to set the millage rate. Today, you are not asked to set the millage rate, but you are asked to set the ceiling or the maximum millage rate that you can consider in September. So at that point, then that maximum millage rate will be published, and public hearings will be set, and you will then proceed through seeing the rest of the budget until September, and in September, you'll set the millage rate. So that's kind of the process. So this is the first decision in that process. Chris and Lena will read you through a short presentation at this time. Take it from here, Lena or Chris?
I'll kick it off. Good morning, City Council.
Morning.
Just a quick look at our budget timeline. Clicker's not working, I apologize. There we go. And where we are to date, as Mr. Landon mentioned, we were here just last week for our first budget workshop, where we reviewed the general fund budget. We're here today to adopt a resolution for our maximum millage rate. That is our trim rate, which will appear in the trim notices that the property appraiser will send out in August. And we'll return in just a few weeks for our next budget workshop, where we'll discuss our proprietary, special revenue, and capital fund budgets. Once again, this is a summary of our general fund, same slide that we reviewed last week at our budget workshop. The total percentage, I'm sorry, the section at the top in like a greenish color represents where our proposed budget for two thousand and seventeen is in comparison to our adopted budget for two thousand and sixteen. The increase is being proposed at about four-point-nine percent. There in the middle, you'll see the change to our FTEs, which are being proposed in next year's budget, total increase in the general fund of seven positions. And down below, our estimated ending, our projections for our expenditures will be, actually, our expenditures themselves, we're expecting to be about one percent below where we started the year, but we do show that we'll have some reserves at the end of the year, and we are proposing a transfer of some fund balance to the Capital Projects Fund, and that's that five-hundred thousand dollars that you see there highlighted in yellow. The overall impact to the fund would be an increase of one-point-two percent. That includes that transfer of the fund balance into the Capital Projects Fund. Once again, look at our millage rate history. There at the bottom, the bar in black shows our fiscal year two thousand and seventeen preliminary taxable value, which is expected to increase five percent. These are our millage rate options. At the top is our two thousand and sixteen adopted millage rate, which is four-point-two-four-five-zero. The two thousand and seventeen rollback rate, which is four-point-one-one-nine-five. The majority vote rate, which is six-point-six-two-five-two, and the two-thirds vote rate, which would be seven-point-two-eight-seven-seven. Our proposal for the two thousand and seventeen maximum millage rate, if you look at the section at the bottom, is four-point-two-four-five-zero. We're proposing to keep it flat, the same as our two thousand and sixteen millage rate. That would produce an increase of five percent as far as property taxes going, I'm sorry, as far as property taxes. And what you can see below the proposed trim rate is the portion that would go into the stormwater fund, into the general fund, and then into the Capital Projects Fund. Did you want to highlight anything on this? Great, great. So once again, what we're proposing is to adopt the trim rate, the maximum millage rate of four-point-two-four-five-zero, keeping it flat.
Mr. DiLorenzo.
This is not a question, but it goes back to something we talked about at our workshop last week. I asked the question about, does it make sense to continue with stormwater, or increase the stormwater fee rather than have a millage directly for capital projects? And since you sent that info to us, but I think we should tell the public that we analyzed that, and that that did not make sense. There was a, the portion that would come from residential was higher than, by raising the stormwater rate, than it would be from raising or having a portion of millage go to capital, for stormwater. Just a comment. For clarification, back to our workshop last week.
Absolutely. It was a great question, too. It was interesting for Chris and I to look at that together.
Close.
Yeah, it was. We thought that's what we would see, but it was definitely a good exercise for us, too, to be looking at that.
Thank you.
And just a comment. Understand that what we're proposing today is the worst-case scenario. This is not the final millage rate. This is the worst or the most that it could be. Now, we still have several budget presentations to go through. I don't want to tie our hands too early in the process. Later on, we can adopt a lower tax rate if that's appropriate, but I still hear from citizens and from council members the idea that we need to increase some of our services, expand some of our services. One final thought. If you look at the statistics, we are anticipating four hundred building permits this year. That means four hundred more families, four hundred more sources for service. So I think as Palm Coast continues to grow, we need to be able to meet the demands of that growth. At this worst-case scenario, holding a tax rate the same as last year gives us about five percent capacity to deal with that expanded growth. So just a comment.
Mr. Mayor, the other part about that is that there's at least a one-year, almost a two-year delay sometimes before we see any real revenues from the new growth within the city because of the way the tax system works.
There's a year delay in receiving taxes, but there's not a year delay in the demand for services.
That is correct.
Absolutely.
One question. What portion, based on the trim rate, the proposed trim rate that we adopted, eight-hundred-and-thirty, the five percent increase, what percentage of that comes directly from homesteaded residential? Or dollar amount?
I don't know. I don't have that off the top of my head. I would have to contact the county to see if they can split out how much of our residential...
Homestead increases are capped at the CPI or three percent, whichever is the less.
Right. And for single-family homesteaded homes right now, the increase in taxable value is around one percent or less currently.
I think I calculated, and it looked like it was about two-point-four percent.
Right.
Does that sound right?
Yes.
Okay. So about two points, so even though we're getting five percent, two-point-four percent is only coming, only two-point-four percent increase to the standard household, that's homesteaded, and that's how you educated me yesterday.
Right. Right. And what we saw in a number of the examples that we took a look at, at the same rate, like in my case, in many cases, the actual percent increase to the individual would be one percent or less.
Right.
Chris, do you have that little spreadsheet? We do. If we, I think that's really worthwhile for people to see the actual impact this has on an average home.
Yeah, because, you know, it is, it's out there that it's a five percent increase, and it's really not to the average household, a five percent increase.
You have a number of variables. Homestead is one, then you have the new construction, that additional value, and then you have the non-homestead, you know, those investors out there that aren't, don't have the same cap as homestead. So the increase is much smaller for our residents than it is for many of the other property owners. So I think it's always good to show a typical house, and Chris has got... I've got a few examples here. The first one is actually my house, which is very close to the average taxable value in the city. At the same millage rate, four-point-two-four-five-zero, the actual increase in my taxes would only be one-point-oh-nine percent. What you see right here, that would be the actual increase, about four dollars or one-point-oh-nine percent. I took a number of other examples of homes that had different taxable values. This one here is a little bit more than double mine. You can see the increase in this particular one is point-eight-six percent. The next one, point-nine-seven percent. So I took a range of taxable values for homes to show that, and again, the property appraisers are still honing their numbers down, so somewhere one percent or less right now is what we're looking at for the actual percent change, dollar percent change in a homesteaded property. We also took a look at a number of commercial properties. Here's Coles, for an example, and same issue with Coles. I just happened to pick this one randomly because my wife is there often.
Supporting the economy.
And same, basically same kind of numbers, even for businesses. That's the actual, you know, out-of-pocket increase.
So if you think about how your bills went up last year, your general bills, a one, less than one percent or one percent increase is basically just supporting additional cost, not new services, but, you know, so...
Right. Right. And again, we, you know, we received, and many people have heard about FPL's proposed rate increases. They provided us information that they're requesting an initial nine percent increase. We budgeted for about half of that, because typically, when they're first round with the utility commission, they don't always get everything that they ask for, but streetlights alone, we pay six-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars a year for streetlights. If you figure a five percent increase, that's forty-something thousand dollars just there alone. So the city sees the same increases that consumers see in the same kind of consumer goods that we purchase.
Other council questions? If not, we'll open the meeting to the public on agenda item number six, any from the public wish to be heard on the proposed maximum millage rate. Signee on approach the podium, we'll close the public portion meeting, go back to council. Additional questions, comments, or a motion to approve? Move to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries without objection. Agenda item number seven, resolution approving increase in the city manager's salary based on city council performance evaluation. Mr. Landon, I suspect you don't want to handle this one.
Well, I'll start it, like usual, but you've actually asked our HR director to handle it, but it's, I haven't asked for a pay raise for seven years. I did ask for one this year in a workshop, and you asked that you go through a evaluation process and asked that our HR director handle that, and then base any proposed salary increase on that evaluation. So Wendy is going to handle it as you asked for. So take it from here, Wendy.
And thank you so much for asking, all of you. Back in March, as Mr. Landon alluded, good morning, Mayor, Council. He asked for the same, basically, pay plan adjustment increase that all directors received. So every year in January, we look at the minimum amount of our starting salaries, and we add an amount to that and shift the entire pay plan. And so this past year, it was two percent, and for directors, that represented one-thousand-five-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars. In March, when Mr. Landon made that request, and unfortunately, I wasn't here, you all decided that you would like to do a formal evaluation. So with you, I sent out draft of an evaluation tool, which you returned with comments. We made the adjustments, and then I sent that back out to you. And I included a few, not tips necessarily, but just things to ponder as you did your evaluation, to remember that, you know, the city manager operates on a collective vision, so your individual visions may not necessarily be the same as the collective, and to remember that as you are adjusting and rating his service, and recognizing the fact that it's not the easiest job in the world, but also there shouldn't be any bombs, for lack of a better term, in the evaluation. I always use the example, when I trained on evaluations, when I was in school, I had a weekly spelling quiz. If I got an A on my spelling quiz every single week, at the end of the ten-week term, I expected an A on my report card. If I got a C every single week, I expected a C. So you really shouldn't take an evaluation as a time to address something for the first time. It should be more of an ongoing collective. And with that, you all returned your evaluations. I tabulated the scores. The scores are available in the agenda packet, and the overall rating that Mr. Landon received from you all ended up being a three-point-five, which was halfway in between meets expectation and exceeds expectations. For regular staff, we go through an evaluation process every year. Everybody gets an evaluation on the one-year anniversary of their appointment to whatever position they happen to be in. This year, staff received between a zero percent and a five percent increase with a departmental average of two. So employees who received a meets expectations score would have received a two percent increase for the year for their merit. And so the recommendation I am making is to treat the city manager, as with all other employees, he is an employee of the city, after all, treat him as the same as all other employees. I recommended a two percent increase based on that fact, plus the annual pay plan adjustment equivalent to that which directors received in January of the fifteen thirty-five, and it worked out to be a two-point-nine percent increase.
Council questions?
I have a question. If a regular or a director had something that was under meets expectations, would they still get an increase?
It's possible. I mean, we're looking at the overall evaluation in every category. Mr. Landon scored meets or exceeds, or meets or exceeds expectations. He never received a collective score less than three. We do have employees, there is latitude, certainly you have it. We have employees that have received a one percent increase or a one-and-a-half percent merit increase based on something in their evaluation that required improvement. So yes, there are employees who did not receive the full two percent. But we also have employees who exceed expectation. This year, employees could get up to five, a five percent increase.
My other question would be, anything that fell below meets expectations, do they usually have a target goal, something to come back with to bring that score up, some kind of goal-type package?
For our employees, not necessarily. When we have employees who, their overall performance, and I mean all factors...
So Wendy is going to handle it as you asked for, so take it from here, Wendy.
And thank you so much for asking, all of you. Back in March, as Mr. Landon alluded, good morning, Mayor, council. He asked for the same basically pay plan adjustment increase that all directors received. So every year in January, we look at the minimum amount of our starting salaries and, and we add an amount to that and shift the entire pay plan. And so this past year it was 2%, and for directors that represented $1,535. In March, when Mr. Landon made that request, and unfortunately I wasn't here, you all decided that you would like to do a formal evaluation. So, with you, I sent out draft of an evaluation tool, which you returned with comments, we made the adjustments, and then I sent that back out to you. And I, I included a few, not tips necessarily, but just things to ponder as you did your evaluation, to remember that, you know, the city manager operates on a collective vision, so your individual visions may not necessarily be the same as the collective, and to remember that as you are adjusting and rating his service, and recognizing the fact that it's not the easiest job in the world, but also there shouldn't be any bombs, for lack of a better term, in the evaluation. I always use the example, when I trained on evaluations, when I was in school, I had a weekly spelling quiz. If I got an A on my spelling quiz every single week, at the end of the 10-week term, I expected an A on my report card. If I got a C every single week, I expected a C. So, you really shouldn't take an evaluation as a time to address something for the first time, it should be more of an ongoing collective. And with that, you all returned your evaluations, I tabulated the scores, the scores are available in the agenda packet, and the overall rating that Mr. Landon received from you all ended up being a 3.5, which was halfway in between meets expectation and exceeds expectations. For regular staff, we go through an evaluation process every year, everybody gets an evaluation on the one-year anniversary of their appointment to whatever position they happen to be in. This year, staff received between a 0% and a 5% increase with a departmental average of 2. So employees who received a meets expectations score would have received a 2% increase for the year for their merit. And so, the recommendation I am making is to treat the city manager, as with all other employees, he is an employee of the city, after all, treat him as the same as all other employees. I recommended a 2% increase based on that fact, plus the annual pay plan adjustment equivalent to that which directors received in January of the 1535, and it worked out to be a 2.9% increase.
Council questions?
I have a question. If a regular, or a director, had something that was under meets expectations, would they still get a increase?
It's possible. I mean, we're looking at the overall evaluation in every category. Mr. Landon scored meets or exceeds, or meets or exceeds expectations, he never received a collective score less than three. We do have employees, there is latitude, certainly you have it, we have employees that have received a 1% increase or a 1.5% merit increase based on something in their evaluation that required improvement. So yes, there are employees who did not receive the full 2%, but we also have employees who exceed expectation. This year, employees could get up to five, a 5% increase.
My other question would be, anything that fell below meets expectations, do they usually have a target goal, something to come back with to, to bring that score up? Some kind of goal-type package?
For our employees, not necessarily. When we have employees who, their overall performance, and I mean all factors, is less than meets expectations, many times we will develop what we consider an improvement plan for that employee with benchmarks and deadlines in order to improve in those specific areas, in order to kind of prevent the disciplinary process. Obviously, we would rather grow our workforce rather than, you know, invest in time and training and have them leave. So there are, and have been, employees who have received a performance improvement plan, but their performance really generally falls well below into the poor range on certain things before we institute something like that.
What about, oh, I'm sorry, what about goals for next year based on these evaluations? You see, because I know we try to use the, the, you know, the strategic action plan and then the, the goals and objectives from that, and that's good, but there also are these more personal directed at, at the city manager, as to, here's how we feel, and it can always be better, you know, unless it gets a five, you know, that's it, but do we put together goals to?
I suppose we can, you know, again, the, the city manager's evaluation is based on the collective vision of council and how you feel he's meeting those expectations, which the, the performance goals, the performance measures, the, the displays are in every single office. How is he meeting your specific goals and objectives as set by council and carrying forward your directives? Now, if you want to address specific areas of performance that you'd like him to, to work on, I suppose we could talk about that, but his overall performance is based on the direction you give him and how well he performs at achieving the goals you set.
Let me comment if I may. Each council member has their own set of perceptions, expectations, and their own personal goals for the city. I make it a point to meet with the city manager weekly, and we discuss issues that are coming up, and I also discuss my personal perceptions, and every council member has that ability to say, "Mr. Landon, this is an area that I think you need to work on." He can choose to address that individually, or council members, if there's something that you have suggested that needs improvement and you don't see that improvement, then we can come to the council, because Mr. Landon is an employee of the five of us, not any one of us individually. So it would require five of us to say, "Here is city council's performance expectations." I would prefer that we deal with it one-on-one initially, and then if there's not the kind of improvement, as our former city manager used to say, "I serve from Tuesday to Tuesday." Any given Tuesday, we can terminate the contract if the man is not meeting our expectations as a group.
Your honor, if I may.
McGuire.
I, I view the city manager's position as somewhat unique, and I say that because he may be an employee, and is an employee of the city of Palm Coast, but he also steers the ship, so I've, I think that Mr. Landon has done a good job in the five years that I've worked with him. There are things that, that I'm not real crazy about, and I've discussed them with him one-on-one, he is approachable, he is receptive. But that having been said, you know, how do you compensate the CEO of a company who essentially reports to the board of directors? If this, if the organization is moving forward and delivering a return on investment, then he retains his position and maybe gets some additional compensation. Mr. Landon falls into that category in my mind. I, I think he's, he's certainly somebody that we want, but having said that, I think he's compensated pretty well for his position at this time. I have no problem with giving him a COLA and a justice salary to the, to the Consumer Price Index, but I think in terms of what the job requirement is, and it's strictly a gut feeling of mine based on the years that I spent in executive management and industry, I think Mr. Landon's compensation is, is adequate for his performance and for the job that's required of him, and I will not support an increase in pay at this time.
One comment, you chose to use a maritime analogy. You said the city manager steers the ship, the captain sets the course, the mate at the wheel may follow the captain's direction. In this case, the five of us set the course for the city. The city manager's job is to implement the, the goals and directives that we have established. We should clear on that.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for clarifying my nautical.
Mr. Mayor, just to continue with, I think where Mr. McGuire was going, the, I don't find the city manager, yes, yes, he's an employee of the city, but he's not the same type of an employee of the city because he is our contract employee. We don't have other employees that are, are contracted and started with a negotiated salary to start with. The rest of our, of our employees are, have a salary range, they have a job description, and that job description comes with a salary range. This is not the case with Mr. Landon. In reviewing, Wendy, thank you for sending us kind of the salaries of other city managers, it was eye-opening. There are some city managers that are being paid two, more than $2 per, per citizen, per year, and we're somewhere in like 30 cents per citizen. If you look at it that way, if you take their salary and break it down over the number of citizens, that's probably not the best way to look at it, but it was interesting way to look at it. Because one of the things we, we didn't have, but we could imagine, is that if you have a population of 5,000, your organization is going to be this big, and when you have a population like Palm Coast of nearly 85,000, your organization is this big, and then you have a much bigger responsibility to, as the city manager. But in looking at that salary range, I, I agree with you, Mr. McGuire, that the, even though you haven't received a raise in, in several years, your range, your salary, current salary range is in line with, with other cities of our, of our size. And, and I agree that I don't support a, an increase, and I don't, I don't support a CPI increase either. I think that this is our employee, it's a city council's employees, a contract employee, negotiated salary, and the salary is, is in the correct place for this time.
Mr. Mayor, just a couple procedural comments. First of all, absolutely what everyone's saying is correct. Your city manager is a charter officer, so the provisions, the terms are provided for in your charter as opposed to, if you will, a regular employee, regular employee being subject to the city's personnel rules and procedures, and the city manager's not. City manager's subject, and this is a contractual process that we're working on, you have a contract with him, and it's been amended before. And then for the record, Mr. Mayor, I just want to make sure that it's very clear that we're in compliance with the Government of Sunshine, Chapter 286, and for the record and for the public, all of the reviews and the, the process for the annual evaluation are public records and are sub, and are attached to the agenda, so the compilation is, is being discussed and the review is, this is, this, this, the review is actually part of the process in the consideration of whether or not the city, you give the city manager a raise at this time.
Thank you. Any other council, Mr. Mobiel? Just a few comments. First, I, I disagree, you know, to this, and agree with the mayor in that I don't see the city manager's position as the CEO. The CEO sets direction and the future, you know, which, where, where is the city going to go, how are we going to get there, that kind of stuff. I see him more as a, an operations director or, or vice president even, but given that, even though he's at a contractual basis, most of the time with somebody at that level of position outside of, of public service, they are compensated, not like a regular employee where they're getting COLA raises and, and, and performance raises, but they're getting bonuses that, you know, are tied to their performance and, and how they're working and how their city's going. So, we're in that position, we don't want to go there, but I feel that the dollar amount we're talking about for a raise here, over a seven-year period, just might be warranted in, in a show of, you know, he is an employee, and we have to give some form of, of, I mean, otherwise we really don't need the evaluation, because if, if we don't, if we're, if we don't agree to, to, to increase the salary any by performance, then we shouldn't, we don't need to do performance, we just come in here one day and say, "Okay, Mr. Landon, have a nice day," and, you know, or whoever the city manager is. So I, I, I'm a little torn on this because, like I said, we're talking about a very small amount of money when you, when you calculate it over seven years, you know, when, without, what's the dollar amount, Wendy, you know, just a round figure?
Agenda item.
$4,000, sorry, $4,897 in change.
So you calculate, divide that over, that's like $500 a year, or $600 a year increase. I'm okay with that. You have to take care of your employees. If you don't take care of your employees, you don't show any sign of appreciation, you don't show any sign, you're, you're in a losing battle. And like I said, in a gentleman, in a man's, in a person's position at this level, it's more usually a bonus structure, but we don't do bonuses, so we should have the next step, which is, you know, some form of increase there. So, I know a lot of people, I'm going to get a lot of flack, the, I can just see my email, bing, 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 bing.
And then you won that.
Yeah, but I, I, I want people out there to forget who the city manager is, and it's just, that's, I'm focusing on the position. So just because you don't like Mr. Landon, you know, that's not a reason for treating somebody in an improper manner as an employee that you have to deal with. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, continue. Mr. Mobiel, as part of the budget kind of emails we got this week, follow-up questions, so our questions in the workshop, there was the total pay increases and total merit pay increases that were being offered to the employees, and that total, total is up, divided by 400, which is roughly the size of our organization, that works out to be about $700 per year per employee. Obviously, it's not that because you have different.
Right, different sizes.
Right, but for, for kind of a number, it's about $700, and it works out to be about $13 a, a week.
Yeah.
This is $5,000. You know, I know you're saying it's.
I understand that, yeah.
It's, in the big scheme of things, it's not a large number, but.
Well, if you look at percentage-wise, but then again, I'm cutting that over seven years, I'm not.
I understand, yes.
I, I do agree, if this was a, this year's raise, and last year there was an increase in the year before, I'd say, yeah, you're, you're way off, you're way off target with that.
Recently, in talking with some citizens about the attorney, you know, we increased the attorney contract, and I use the exact same scenario that you did. Okay, yes, but we've had this attorney for this year, and they hadn't had a raise over this period of time, so really, it's not a 15% raise, it's a 3% raise over a five-year period, and set very, you know, same kind of way of thinking, and I understand what you're saying there, but I still say that the, the current salary is within the appropriate range, and that's, and that's where.
I agree with you, based on looking at salaries in, in different areas, based on the size of the, I do have a problem with your math, though.
Is my math bad?
Yeah, 30 cents on a, that's, if we have 85,000, it's more like $2 is salary a person.
I don't, yeah, maybe I'm wrong.
Yeah, just a little, yeah, I just, I did the numbers, but.
I want him to do my.
Trying to think what, was, then I probably swapped the numbers. What was, what was the other one then, I'm wondering?
Probably a lot higher, probably a lot higher, yeah. At this time, I'd like to open the meeting to the public. Any from the public wish to be heard on this agenda item? Excuse me.
Louis McCarthy, Palm Coast. I just want to ask one question. Whichever way you vote, at any time, can the council turn around and increase his salary at any time? And that's it?
Get your answer.
Yes, good morning, Vincent Agori. From what I've heard, you hired this gentleman at a salary level, and I think it's somewhat unfair to say that because of that salary level, he should not get a raise, that he's in line. I look at it as in business, what has been his accomplishments? And if he has met your goals and accomplished your goals, he's entitled to a raise. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning, Council Anita Modere, Palm Coast. I would like to say that Mr. Landon does an excellent job of project managing, he has a huge responsibility, and I really appreciate that. He serves the council and he serves the citizens well on just about all those projects. I would like to see that part of the results of the evaluation include his supporting a get-well plan between the city and county managers so that we stop the urinary Olympics that seem to be in place. And again, I appreciate everything that he does and hope that he can bring about better relationships with the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning, Robert McDonald, Palm Coast. Question, this 3% that this young lady is talking about, is that 3% increase going to be based upon the city manager's base salary or his total package including benefits and other compensation that the city is going to pay for? And I also want to go on record as saying that if you're talking about someone getting an increase, or it's going to be open to the public, I don't really think that the individual, whether it be a city manager or the mayor or a council, should be present. And also, I have a hard time with someone from human resources proposing an increase for any employee, well, especially the city manager, when indirectly the head of human resources works for the city manager. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning, George Mayo, Palm Coast. In the five years that I've been here, there's been harmony amongst city council, also with Mr. Landon. Everything has worked almost seamlessly from what I've seen, and I come here to these meetings often. I don't know the behind-the-scenes, daily dealings that you may have with him if something may go wrong, but nothing shows here. I've mentioned before the ranker we've seen in DeBarry and other local cities and towns, managers resigning, they just had to get managers in Bonnell and Flagler Beach. Of course, they're smaller towns, but many of the times, they wind up hiring the city manager above the pay that was from the person who just left the job. Everything works so well. I don't know all of your previous employment records, if you were self-employed or worked for somebody, but I know that I, if I worked for somebody for seven years and did my job and got no raise whatsoever, that would seek me, give me pause for thought about going somewhere else. Should he decide to do that and feel unappreciated for what he has done? Our city has grown largely, even just the five years that I've been here, and as Mr. Nett's just said, we expect 400 building permits, so it's growing by leaps and bounds. So it's not as if our city is static and he's still the city when he was hired of, whatever it might have been, 55,000 people. Now we're up to 85,000. Should he go somewhere else, the cost of filling in for him and then the review process and everything, well outweighs giving him a $5,000 raise. So I think he's done a good job, we, as far as I know, incurred no lawsuits because of any of his actions. Everything's gone well. I sincerely hope we can keep him, he's worked very well, and I think he deserves a raise for what he has done.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Rhonda Costa, Palm Coast. I just want to make a quick statement that I firmly believe that the city manager has done a fantastic job, not just a good job, a fantastic job, and I do believe that he deserves this raise, and I hope that he, that you will accept this and we can move on because. accept this, and we can move on, because he has done such a fantastic job in this city. Let's face it, Palm Coast is a beautiful, wonderful place to live, and a lot of it has to do with his responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Next speaker. We'll approach the podium. We'll close the public portion of the meeting. Back to council. First, we have two questions. Uh, the question of the timing of an increase. Could the city council at some other time arbitrarily propose, or offer, or give an increase? Mr. Rachel?
Yeah, your contract speaks to that in a manner, and, and this is the contract, uh, the original contract. There has, have not been any amendments to the contract on this issue. And it says in section three, subsection two, that, that the parties agree that any, if there are, if there is to be an increase in base salary, um, and/or benefits, um, that's up to the city council in its sole discretion, on the basis of an annual evaluation and salary review. And then it goes on to say that that annual, annual evaluation and salary review should be made on the anniversary date of the employment. So, it seems to me the contract says that, that you, you just can't, you can't do it-
Red.
Pelmell, you can't do it at your discretion, but, and, um, so, I, I think that, that's addressed pretty clearly in, in the, the contract section I just read.
The second question was, is the proposed increase based on base salary, or the aggregate of salary and benefits?
It's based on base salary, salary, sir.
I think it's important for everybody to understand that for the past seven years, it's not that city council has not given the manager a raise, it's that the manager, understanding the circumstances that all local governments were in with the recession, did not ask for a raise. To me, that, that is very, very telling, because you, and Mr. Maguire, you're aware of this, in, in the corporate world, your corporation could be losing money, and the CEO gets a huge raise. Uh, that was not the case here. So, all right, back to city council. Additional questions, comments, or motion on-
Mr. Mayor, just want to add one word. Getting back just to the contract.
Okay.
And, and, and there's really only other ones, one other section in the contract that talks about compensation, or, or how, uh, the monetary side of, of, of the, uh, the relationship between the, the city council and the manager. And that's in, uh, section seventeen. And this was the, the, the basis for your first and only prior amendment to this contract, had to do with, uh, sick leave and, and the benefits associated with that. And we discussed this paragraph at that time. And it says that unless otherwise provided in this agreement, so you have to go back to the section I referenced before, the employee shall be entitled to the highest level of benefits that are enjoyed by the department heads of the employer, as provided in the city charter, city code, and the personnel rules and regulations, or by practice of the city council. I just wanted to, that does not bind your hands as, as to, uh, the, the compensation, but it is, but it, it has factored into your considerations in the past as to the sick leave issue, which was in the first amendment to this contract, and that was done a year or so ago.
Thank you.
And Mayor, I'd like an opportunity to, excuse me, address city council before a vote, however you would like to do that.
Do.
Well, um, this is the most distasteful part of my job. I will tell you that, uh, of all things, just put yourself in my position of being evaluated and talking about your pay publicly. Uh, and it's part of the job, I understand that, okay. Uh, but I am your employee. And I had someone recently, and it's one of the reasons why I really came up with, uh, the decision to ask for a pay raise. And that employee said, "I can't imagine having someone work for me and not give them a pay raise in seven years." And that, that is kind of telling, as far as, uh, how the workplace works. The concept that, well, he's within his pay range, is the market range, every one of them sitting back there are within their market range. So, this year, I'll tell them all, "No, you're getting close to what other people are making, so that's grounds for not having a pay raise." That's not how the system is supposed to work. Um, I have, uh, in my decision, in seven years, not asked for a pay raise. I like my job, I love it here, and that was part of, of that decision. Very, very uncommon. Yes, during the hard times, when other people weren't getting pay raises, city managers weren't getting pay raises also. Those times are behind us. I will tell you that, um, to say I'm doing a good job, or I'm meeting expectations, but no, you don't get a pay raise, that's just not how the workplace works. And you are, you know, uh, how do you treat your employee, is the position you're put in right now. And if you have an employee who is meeting your expectations, you feel like they are doing a good job, there should be some additional compensation that you're, if the organization has the financial means to make that happen, and that the revenue is going in the right direction, and the growth is happening, and those type of things. I strongly believe that, and that's how we treat all our employees. I have treated myself differently, or asked you to treat me differently in, in the past, uh, but I do think with the current financial situation of the city today, that, uh, it is time to, uh, change, uh, at least my position on whether or not your city manager, whether it's me or anybody else, should be considered for a pay raise each year. I also am going to take this opportunity, because I know it's out there, as to what, how much do you pay a city manager? And am I overpaid, uh, underpaid, you know, all those things. Um, it is a competitive market, it should be based on the market out there. Uh, that is one criteria. I'm going to give you a couple other criteria as to how city managers' salaries are determined. Uh, two of them, in my opinion, one, one is the experience and the person's historical performance. I have been doing, been in, uh, local government administration for thirty-five years, or close to it. Twenty-five years of that as city manager. This is my profession. I have grown a great deal in this profession. Yes, you can look at what other city managers make, but to find someone with my background and experience for what I make won't be easy for you. Not impossible, but won't be easy, in my opinion. Secondly, is performance. You know, if you look at my history before Palm Coast, something unusual for me, I've never been fired, never been let go from a job. Not a whole lot of city managers and county administrators can say that. Uh, I have been very successful in my career by climbing the ladder, which means going from smaller cities to larger cities. I have chose not to do that after I got to Palm Coast. That doesn't mean that, well, I just should keep the same compensation forever, because I have chosen not to go on to the next level. And there are higher levels out there, obviously, than, than Palm Coast, as far as population and, and salaries are concerned. But I do think that as far as this organization's concerned, you've got one, a premier organization here. The national and state recognitions we have for this organization, the taxes that we, uh, how low we keep the taxes, and how we stretch those dollars, you don't see in local government quite like we have right here in Palm Coast. Very, very proud of that. And how, where we are today compared to where we were nine years ago, when I started here, take a look at it. How have we grown as a, as an organization, and, and as a community? Very proud of that. I do think those are the factors that should go into whether or not someone deserves a pay raise. I get the politics of it. I get that he makes too much money. I get the perception. But your job is to, as a board of directors for a municipal corporation, to make decisions based on not the public perception or politics, or what does your city manager deserve. And I would ask that you take that in consideration before you vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions, comments, or a motion?
I, um-
Comment, Your Honor?
Mr. Maguire.
I empathize with what Mr. Landon is saying. The, the question before this council is, does the job that's required from the city manager, is that job well compensated for? Not, not, did he do really great, or, or not so good? But at, at the end of the day is, what should the job pay? And, and I think that now, in this year, the compensation for the city manager is about right. I think when I came into this office, I think the salary for the city manager was higher than it should have been. But be that as it may, we stayed with it, we worked with it. Now, I think it's, it's where it ought to be, and I think that, uh, in years to come, if Mr. Landon continues to perform as he does, I think a, a, uh, an increase in pay is, is certainly well due. And, and so, and, and again, I would say that, that, that the compensation that the city manager makes is, is in keeping with what it should be. And I think a lot of Mr. Landon, I've told him so, I've had a few criticisms, I've shared them with him, but at, at the end of the day today, what we pay our city manager is about right. A year from now, two years from now, it probably won't be. Five years from, ago, when I first came to this council, it was my opinion, and I didn't share it with anybody, but it was my opinion that it was too high. That's all.
Mr. Mayor, I could just want to say, um, that the whole evaluation process needs to have a, a final something from it. I mean, I'd hate to think we did all this evaluation, and we get nowhere from it. I think there's, um, things that we have issues with, or we have concerns about, that we can address, and then maybe look back at this. This is something that was going to be, um, back from February. We were going to, um, do the race from February two thousand sixteen. So, maybe we just need to sit with him one-on-one. I mean, I know we do it all the time, but just address some of those concerns, and maybe look at this again later, after we address the concerns. I mean, I, I understand someone wanting a raise after seven years, I get that. Um, I think Palm Coast is doing great. And it is a political thing, where we do hear from everybody, um, nobody wants their taxes to go up, no one wants to hear that, um, somebody's making so much more than them, because we don't have those kind of pays here in Palm Coast. So, I, I get that, but I'd like to at least know that putting everything into this evaluation stood for something, and we can take that and make goals for what we're looking for, and how we can change in the future.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to indicate, there, there is an attorney general opinion, and, and certainly, every local government is entitled to have every member, uh, and every individual member of its, of its governing body have the ability to individually go to this, um, their, their executive director, their city manager, county manager, and, and have discussions. But when it's the board's annual evaluation, that needs to be done as a public meeting. So, that's really what we're doing today, consistent with your, your contract. And, and as Mr. Landon indicated, it's the, he is, in his words, it's the most distasteful part of, of, of his position. But unfortunately, the attorney general has placed that burden upon all local government executive, executives, as well as local governments, that when it's not an individual governmental officials' role in, uh, providing feedback to their executive. But when it's the board's decision, and that, that's, that's, that's what we're doing today, and we're doing in public. So, I just want to make sure that everyone understands that distinction, so that we're clear with the, the powers that be up in Tallahassee.
Mr. Mayor, I think what I'm hearing from a couple council members is concerns about, um, not the goals, the, and how their, how, how our goals are being accomplished, okay? But more on the person, personal side, how, what's happening there, and how is that going to be addressed in the future. And I would say that if you continue, and I say "you," because I won't be here, so that if you continue to use this evaluation, you'll be able to, um, wa, reevaluate those personal, um, traits, personal concerns, not personnel, personnel, um, and, you know, rate that accordingly, year after year. And then you will have a better, um, you'll have a consistent review as you move forward, and you may see differences there. So, you'll be able to separate the, uh, you know, is the city operating well, are all the goals being met, is personal growth occurring? And you'll be able to see that in the valuation itself, if the evaluation is used consistently.
And I think it needs to be. It, it was important that we did it this year, but like you said, you have to see that it's changed some. Um, that's the only purpose I can see far in evaluation.
You had a comment?
Yeah, I totally forgot.
Sorry about that.
It's all right.
I'm going to offer one final comment. I'm not going to ask Mr. Legori to speak on this, but upstairs, in my desk, is a handwritten memorandum that Mr. Legori put before city council when we were in the process of hiring Mr. Landon. Mr. Legori, if you, after the meeting, if you'd like to come up and take a look at it, I'll refresh your memory. But basically, what he did was an analysis of all the applicants that we had for this position at that time, and their salary requests. And Mr. Landon fell right in the middle. Some were higher, some were lower. I think city council has done an admirable job of providing direction for the city manager. I think the city speaks for itself in that respect. And I think the city manager has taken the direction that city council has given, and has implemented things that have made Palm Coast what it is. We did an evaluation, we didn't do one for a number of years, because there was no request for a raise. But clearly, the contract relates, there's a nexus between a potential raise and an evaluation. We have an evaluation form. It shows that on every issue, the city manager meets or exceeds expectations. If you had an employee who meets or exceeds expectations, then I think that employee is entitled to a raise in compensation. Is there a motion on the table?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Is there a second? I'd like to yield the gavel to the vice mayor. Can you give that piece to? And I will second the motion. You are now chairing the meeting.
Okay. Do I hear any, um, any other? He's telling me what to say over there.
Would it be appropriate to request any further discussion on the motion?
And do we want to hear from the public?
We've already heard from the public.
Okay. Then if I hear no other, um, discussion-
Call for a vote.
Then I call for a vote. Thank you.
All in favor?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
If you, roll call vote, I would suggest.
Mayor Nettles.
Yes.
Councilmember Nobiel.
Yes.
Councilmember Maguire.
No.
Councilmember Di Lorenzo.
No.
Uh, Vice Mayor Shipley.
No.
Motion fails for lack of a-
Fails for lack of-
Motion failed. Okay, I'll take my gavel back, since that item is done.
You're going to prepare me for these things. I can't be mayor.
Move to the consent agenda. This is an opportunity for the public to speak on any of the items that the city council might act upon in a group. There are two consent agenda items. Anyone wish to comment on them, or have any of them removed, before council takes action on the consent agenda? Signaling approaching the podium, consent agenda items eight and nine, is there a motion? Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries without objection. This brings us to the public participation portion of the meeting, slightly different. This is the opportunity for the public to speak on any item not on today's agenda. Anyone wishing to speak, come up to the podium, give us your name, please limit your contribution to three minutes.
Thank you.
... humidity, and traffic fumes, eight thousand cars and five hundred and sixty trucks per day is a deadly, toxic combination for the presence of Florida Park Drive. Two thousand and three, the city stated that the traffic was too heavy on Florida Park Drive. Two thousand and three to two thousand and five, the city did nothing to curtail the traffic from getting worse. Two thousand and eight, the city reclassified. Uh, two thousand and five to two thousand and seven, the city installed a turn lane off of Palm Harbor Parkway on the Florida Park Drive. Park Drive. 2008, the city reclassified Florida Park Drive and Major Collector Road, which increased the number of cars and added commercial trucks to the residential area. 2012 to 2016, the city has ignored complaints from residents about the harm to their health from excessive traffic. 2012, 2016, city has ignored reports from CDC, EPA, WHO, many universities worldwide about the harm of close proximity traffic to homes. 2014, the city ignored a study done by Berry University School of Law, Environmental Earth Law Clinic. 2014 to 2016, the city installed another turn lane on from Palm Coast Parkway on to Florida Park Drive, again, increasing the number of traffic on Florida Park, the amount of traffic on Florida Park Drive. 2014 through 2016, the, the light was extended so it stays green longer for people, for people turning off of Palm Coast Parkway to more traffic to go up Florida Park Drive. City is now allowing cut through traffic to go from Palm Harbor down to the Island Walk and later on, probably Holland Park. The city continually violates its own policies and ordinances, and these violations are harming the health and the well-being of Florida Park Drive residents. All, all of these items were fully, are fully knowledge of harm being, would be caused to the residents. All of the, those on the city council today are aware of the harm that is causing residents. All the programs to protect children will be a failure in the city if it forgets just one child. It is up to the, to today's city council to decide whether they want the city to protect residents or the city to continue to harm the health of the children and the elderly and the residents on Florida Park Drive. It will not harm the health of any driver for the city to fix this problem, but to not fix it will continue to harm the health of all Florida Park Drive residents. Why is Florida Park Drive more important to the city as a thoroughfare than the health and the lives of the city, than the lives of the residents?
Fifteen seconds.
Think about the amount of money that you have spent to make it possible for additional traffic to, to access Florida Park Drive, and then tell me where is the money to protect the residents' health?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
That's Mr. Legori, Palm Coast. I'd like to discuss a proposal for unimproved lots in high home density residential areas. After 16 years of incorporation, the economic and aesthetic impact of these lots has reached adverse levels. Homeowners maintain their properties, they keep swales clean, lots cause homeowners financial issues via tree debris, fallen trees, and present a real fire danger. Lots do nothing to enhance home and neighborhood value. I have photos of lots in my neighborhood which show the filth and overgrowth, I've given them to the city clerk for your perusal. Residential neighborhoods were never intended to harbor remnants of tree farms, nor are they animal refuge areas. When I presented this problem to the Canfield administration, along with my reason on wildfire, research on wildfire mitigation, a temporary fix, the council took action and set a precedent. Accordingly, I propose the following. Establish standards for high density residential areas. Implement qualifications for classification as high density residential area. This can be accomplished by using plot maps to determine home density, total number of homes on a street divided by the total number of lots. Example, Wiltshire Lane has 40 homes out of a total of 49 lots for a density of 81.6%. We also need to establish time standards relative to duration of lot ownership before density requirements apply. Five years seems fair. We must install ordinance that stipulate procedures as follows. Establish a high density level, I suggest 80%. Two, lots held for five years plus by one owner will be subject to clearance and maintenance in areas classified as high density. Noncompliance will result in fines and leads. Benefits: reduces fire hazards, lowers nuisance abeyments costs, improves drainage, enhances home values and neighborhood appeal, clearance and maintenance expenses offset by wildfire mitigation savings, stimulates the housing market. Council and staff input and expertise can make this a successful and innovative program. Palm Coast has demonstrated its innovative abilities in many situations. One that is outstanding is not imposing an electric utility tax on, on the citizens of Palm Coast, which has saved them millions of dollars. You can do it again by adopting home density standards and requirements. I'd like to also thank Mr. David Clayman, a former member of the Home Rule Coalition, for his input and assistance. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker. Next speaker.
Carmichael, Palm Coast, McMinnon. I'm here to get some help. About a month ago, a little over a month ago, I made a public records request for some very old records regarding payroll and payroll tax records. And I kind of feel like I've, I've been getting the runaround. And the reason I, I'm bringing this to your attention is, is last year, you had a survey which, or went over the performance of the city when it comes to sunshine law and, I believe, section 119 of Florida state law. And Palm Coast rated poorly, okay? Let me, let me go into the importance of, of this record, okay? It, it proves gross incompetence for a particular individual, okay? This is an individual who is running for office, and, and I happen to know this person is essentially corrupt, okay? I, I know this person can't be trusted with 2,600 bucks. I spoke to, when asked by a previous campaign finance manager whether or not I should trust this person, individual indicated to me that they skimmed off the top of their previous campaign. I would like those records so I can begin disseminating to the public an argument for why not to elect this person, okay? And I've been trying for over a month to get some old records, which I've been told either don't exist, or they're too old, they've been destroyed. I would argue that because there are multiple government agencies that have these records, that if the records aren't locally available in Palm Coast, I would like the tax ID for the city so I can make the record request from the IRS or the Social Security Administration because either party will have these records. But it's important that during this season that we get these records and they get out there so that this individual does not gain control of 600-plus million dollars of county resources, administrative authority over those funds. I'm asking you for your help, okay? Thank you.
Yep. Next speaker. Next speaker.
Louis McCarthy, Palm Coast. Upon the decision that you council members made in the increase of the city manager's compensation, which, you know, I hope, and I pray that he stays in the position that he's in. But I think, and I'm hoping that I didn't hear something saying, look, if you can't compensate me for seven years that I did not ask, and I kept the ship to, the ship afloat while everybody else was sinking and, and bailing water and everything else, nothing stays the same, absolutely. The, the people in the back, they, they expect, expect fair compensation. It might not be what they want, it might not be what he wants. At least something should have been done. And to say, oh, he's even with everybody else, well, let's put it this way, he has done more than a yeoman's job in this place, and I've seen it, and I've been here over 20 years, and I've seen the difference. And I ride up and down blocks and everything that used to be just plain nonsense, and things that are brought to his attention are done in a far, far quicker manner. Things, things are attended to, or at least they look, and, and you see people out there checking on this and checking on that, that there's a, there's a report about this. One gentleman comes in, he's, he's here all the time on Florida Park Drive. You never hear me talk about Whiteview Parkway, you never talk about the south part of Bel Teheran. I could, because I can remember when there was a sign that said, no fishing here. So I, I can tell you, I can tell you right now, things are being done, they might not be done in, 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 as fast as some people who live there and who speak only among themselves. But not to give this man a compensation is, and I hope not a thing for him to say, well, I think I better take my wares and go somewhere else to quote one basketball player who, who did that and then move back. Thank you.
Next speaker.
George Mayo, Palm Coast. Again, for the five years that I've lived here, Palm Coast has done very well. You're always proactive instead of reactive from where I came in Connecticut. We've never been penny wise and pound foolish, as my father always taught me. We just poured a few concrete pads, I believe, for bus stops for children for their safety. I'm sure the amount of, that we spent on the concrete and time putting it in was more than the compensation that Mr. Landon was asking for. We're putting in new dugouts, that's fine, we probably needed it, but those are costing way more than the compensation Mr. Landon was asking for. You said that he's well within the range of managers. Well, he got a 3.5 rating. If you had a son or daughter in college and they came home with a 3.5 for the semester, wouldn't you say, that's not good enough? I mean, does a 3.5 only mean he's only supposed to be good enough for the range that he's being paid? Wouldn't you say, that's a good job and, and reward your son or daughter for getting a 3.5? I don't think he's been justly compensated. I hope this isn't a day that the city of Palm Coast will remember and say, gee, we should have done the other thing and given him that modest raise, which I believe he deserves. I'm hoping this can be brought forth in another meeting, rethought over a short period of time, and compensate Mr. Landon, I think, for the justifiable excellent job that he's done for the city. I think otherwise the consequences will cost us far more, replacing him and doing other things. You get a new manager, will he work as well with all the employees that he has to get in touch with and work underneath him? Will they work as well with him? Will the managerial style be the same? We don't know. But it seems like there's no need to even enter that thought and change, so I'm hoping we can rethink this and give him the raise he well deserves. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Next speaker.
Jack Carroll, Palm Coast. I want to bring up the issue of the citations for marijuana. I don't know if it's going to go countywide or citywide, but if it goes citywide, I, I would ask the city, the city council to just turn it down. And I'll give you a couple of reasons, because first of all, I don't think it was recent, it was, I don't think they, they, they went into it deep enough. There are so many things that they, that can happen that they're not considering. Like, if it's, if, if somebody's given a citation for 20 grams and it comes up 25 grams, right? That's a felony. And now what do you do? These things aren't, aren't discussed in, in this, in this, whatever it is that, that they're going to discuss and can bring to, to the, to the county to approve. But if it's going to be by city council, I urge you to just deny it because there's too many things that are not being discussed. I thank you for that, if you do. If you don't... Now, just one more thing. That decision was the worst I've ever heard since I've been here, and I've been coming to meetings for 20 years. That was the worst.
Next speaker.
I second that. Round across to Palm Coast, I've come to almost every meeting for the last 13 years, and I've come across different councilmen, councilwomen. And I very seldom, unlike Jack, very seldom get up and speak, I listen. And I pay attention to what's going on and I take everything with a grain of salt. But there were times when, when I wish I hadn't participated in certain council meetings, and this is one of them. It, it seems ironic that the vote against Mr. Landon's raise, two out of the three that voted against it will no longer be here next year. They won't have to deal with maybe a new city manager and a new salary, and probably a higher salary than what Mr. Landon's making now or what he would have made if he got the raise. I'm totally disgusted. I, I certainly believe that he has more than earned what he is making now and what he would have gotten had the vote been the other way. I just hope and pray that he stays with the city because he's desperately needed. He has gone, he's had, come a long way with this city since he took over as city manager. We've had fantastic growth, the city is in fantastic shape financially and beautif, and the beautification of it, and we, and we've done an awful lot, and he's done an awful lot. And as a citizen of this city, I, I, I really must say, I am totally disgusted with the vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker. Next speaker. You don't approach the podium, we'll close the public portion, we can go back to council. But first, some comments on some of the offerings. Clarification on Florida Park Drive. You don't designate a road a collector and then as a consequence get traffic. Collector is a description of existing traffic conditions. The actions the city council took in the past, redesignating a road as it was a result of traffic, not to encourage traffic.
Mr. Mayor. May I?
Please.
I appreciate Mr. Carr's opinion, but I recently was speaking with a resident and he said, oh, I live on Florida Park Drive, which gave me an opportunity to ask him some questions about his experience. And he told me he's lived there for 20, 20 years, and I said, well, how's the traffic? It's, and he said, it's fine, I wouldn't have it on any other way. From New York, a busy road is a safe road, and I like it just how it is. So, Mr. Carr, I understand your concerns, but it's not everyone's concerns on Florida Park Drive.
The second issue, Mr. Legori offered a suggestion about an order... an ordinance or some action on city council dealing with unimproved lots. I would yield to the attorney on property rights. But I will tell you that early on, the city council made a decision that unimproved lots could not slash should not be cleared because of the maintenance and drainage issues. When there's ground cover, whether it be trees, shrubs, bushes, those properties tend to remain intact in heavy rain. You clear it and the susceptibility for erosion becomes very, very great. It's certainly something council could look at. But I question whether or not what was proposed would be consistent with private property rights.
Mr. Mayor, this is, I share Mr. Legori's concerns. I live in a low-density area. And I agree with you, Mr. Mayor, that I don't, you know, I'm not looking at clearing the lots. But the roadside, there just needs to be more maintenance. In my neighborhood, we have a lot of vacant lots. And the houses around there, you know, they're well-maintained. Everybody takes care of their property. But the vacant lots are a mess. I mean, literally a mess. I mean, you drive down and the vines have trees, you know, growing over. And there's just a, it seems like a 10 or 15-foot beyond the easement that is just, it's not growing properly and it's causing a blight in what the area looks like. And that's what I was talking about earlier, too. Because then it affects the streets. Because then the streets get very, you know, the pine cones pile up and the dirt and all this. And we have grass growing onto the street. You know, we used to have a two-lane street. Now, it's a one-lane street because you've got a foot and a half of grass coming on the road on one side and on the other side. So, it appears it's not, it appears we need to do something. And then I'll yield to the city attorney to tell us.
Council mayor, actually, this is not an item that has been addressed in a ad hoc fashion. There actually is something in your code currently that provides for this. This is in chapter 25 under article four, Wildlife Hazard Minigation. And it defines a fire hazard within the scope or the context of undeveloped vacant lot, which is what we're talking about. It defines an undeveloped vacant lot as any lot or parcel, not just a lot, but also a parcel, that does not contain a structure or improvement. Goes on to say that a fire hazard is defined, for purposes of that, as a brush on undeveloped lots averaging over three feet tall within 30 feet of an existing residential structure is considered a fire hazard. This was, this, I'm assuming, this obviously was prepared back in 2001. But I'm assuming at that time there was a discussion about what was appropriate within the concept of what is and what is not risky or a hazard based upon professional studies and expertise, which is far beyond my pay grade. But, you know, if, I would suggest if there's a need to revisit this, then that would be appropriate to take a look at. What does the science show as far as, and I'm not based upon aesthetics. I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about what is, what presents a risk for adjacent structures and adjacent developed lots. And that's what your code currently is addressing, is not the aesthetics, but the fire hazard. And it certainly provides, as far as a remedy, that if there is a violation of that standard that I just described, then the city obviously can initiate and has initiated, I've been participated in that, in code enforcement against the owner of the vacant lot. And of course, your code declares that to be a nuisance. So, again, as was discussed earlier, there could be a remedy through nuisance abatement, which is also in your code of ordinances. So, that's where the city is right now. The city leadership has looked at this in the past, and that was the conclusion that they reached. Whether that is sufficient or not, that's not something that I'm prepared to comment on or make any observations on at this time.
Well, that was not incorporated in 2001. That was done later as part of our fire-wise...
I apologize.
Doesn't matter. The point is, it was done by city council. But there was a specific intent, and that was to reduce the risk of fire to develop structures. What I believe the two gentlemen are referring to is not the side lot, the sides of the lot, but the part that overhangs the street. I suppose city council could declare that a nuisance if it overhangs the swale, impedes the maintenance of the swale, so on and so forth, and could require the lot owner in a similar fashion to cut back the overhanging brush. That's something city council could do.
Well, currently, right now, I think anything hanging over the street, if it's under 14 feet high, it has to be cut.
We, city crews actually do that.
Right, yeah. And when they come out and they see something hanging into the swale, they take it down and...
Right. You know, that's part of our twice-a-year... Nope, that's ditches. I always get that confused. But the swales, we go out and mow on a regular basis. And then periodically, depending on whether the mowers are having a tough time because of overhang, then we'll come in with the equipment to actually cut back the brush on vacant lots. Yeah, you're talking two different programs. One of them is a public right-of-way, the street right-of-way, versus the side yard and the overhang of vegetation into other people's property.
Something council could look at. I want the city attorney, the city clerk, the city manager to immediately investigate Mr. McMillan's charge that someone is incompetent in city staff with regard to his not getting public records requests. I want that investigated, and I want a response from staff.
Would you like to build...
Yeah, let me address that. I think there's been some confusion. As I understood the comments by Mr. McMillan, he was not accusing staff of being incompetent. And he can speak for himself. But he was saying that he needs the records in order to investigate some incompetence or whatever on behalf of someone who apparently is running for office. But I would like to address his comments, if I may, and I won't speak for the city clerk, as to the issue that does deal with the city, and that's the public records request. And absolutely, the city has received several public records requests from Mr. McMillan regarding some tax information, some older tax information from quite some time ago. And we did respond. I want to make sure the records were... We did promptly and consistent with chapter 119 respond. The response was is that there are no such records responsive to his public records requests. Or if they existed at some point in time, they have been destroyed, as is allowed by chapter 119. After, there's a records retention requirement under chapter 119. And after you get to that point in time, and it depends upon what type of records you're talking about, they no longer have to be maintained. So, I can see the city clerk is wanting to get her two cents in. So, that's, but I did want to tell Mr. McMillan, you know, if there's additional information, you know, we work very hard to comply with chapter 119 and chapter 286. So, if there's a...
I know we do, and that's why the...
And I, but I, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to make sure. But I do not believe Mr. McMillan was asserting that there was incompetence or fraud on behalf of any city employee.
I have had dialogue back and forth with Mr. McMillan with respects to this specific request. We did locate some previous documents in further speaking with Mr. McMillan. I have them on my desk. I need to redact information from it and then have the city attorney approve that those are... The way that I've redacted is, they're good to go. So, I'm just waiting for him, to meet with him today, this afternoon.
I'm sorry, 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 sorry. Okay. My mistake. I apologize. Okay. City council at some point will, I presume, get to evaluate a civil citation ordinance with regard to possession of marijuana and underage drinking and whatever else winds up getting thrown into that. Discussion by city council matters not on the agenda. I'm going to use some executive privilege, and I'm going to go first, only because Mr. Parker has patiently sat here waiting for us to deal with this issue. The request, as I understand it, is for the city to participate wholeheartedly in the Vietnam War, Veteran War, Veterans Day program, whatever, whatever. The only complication that I am aware of is that we have already made commitments to at least one organization and several residents that we would dedicate monuments at Heroes Park on Veterans Day. I see no reason that we couldn't do that dedication and then fully participate in the county-wide organization. So, that would be my recommendation to city council. I don't think we can take a vote on it, but I guess we could. We're still in a public meeting.
You can...
Counsel, any thoughts? My recommendation is that we do our dedication as we have promised these individuals. But then city council participate in whatever fashion is appropriate in the county-wide veterans' celebration.
The timestone conflict either, you know, ours is earlier than from there.
Ray, what time does your ceremony begin on Veterans Day?
At 10 o'clock.
Okay. So, ours begins, typically begins at eight. We're usually out of there, no later than nine. But this will be a truncated ceremony, perhaps. I would encourage city council participate. And I would encourage all residents to participate and give the recognition, not only of Vietnam War veterans, but to all veterans who served our country.
Mayor, if I, yeah, if I could, just that day, Veterans Day this year, we actually have two dedications. One of them is a new name on the hero wall there at the Heroes Park. A veteran, the family has requested that their name be dedicated on Veterans Day. And we've been coordinating with them and been working with the family to make that happen. The other dedication is a presentation you all saw with the post-traumatic stress... Did I get that right? Syndrome memorial there at Heroes Park. And they have plans of unveiling the new memorial. So, both of those have been in the works for months. And so, I think we can make a day out of this for the whole community and the whole county with some...
Yep, so...
And to whatever extent the city, through our website and our communications, can support the county-wide program and make sure the citizens are aware of it. Okay, discussion by city council matters not on the agenda. I've done my two cents worth. Mr. McGuire?
Already?
I'm done.
It's only a cent and a half. A couple of things. Sometimes, when you're a city councilman, or I guess any elected official, when you think about getting up and being sworn into office and putting your hand on a Bible and promising that you'll fulfill your office to the best of your ability, sometimes, having sworn that and taking it seriously, you have to make decisions that you believe are for the best of the citizens that you represent. Sometimes those decisions do not meet with popular support. And in the five years I've sat here, I've made some decisions that caused me to stay up all night and reflect on what I'm doing here. But I have, I think diligently adhered to the oath that I swore when I took this office, that I would do my best for the citizens of Palm Coast. And I think that I have done that. It's not always easy to do. I mean, how do you, how do you not vote for a raise for a man that you admire and respect? But after reflection, reflecting on what's best for the city, that seemed to me the course of action to take. And that having been said, I wish to inform the public that on August the 15th, I will officially resign my position as city councilman of District Number One and pursue the rest of my life in another state. I've worked hard to be a good councilman. I've done my best. And I could look myself in the mirror with no problems, so... But be that as it may, on the 15th of August, I will no longer be a city councilman in the city of Palm Coast. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Mr. Novio?
I have nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. De Lorenzo?
Just one thing, when we were discussing the unimproved lots, one thing we recently did is we have our transportation impact fee study going on. And we asked the consultant to look at opportunities to incentivize infill, for one, that would save us a lot of money. Because if we could have the housing continue to, you know, fill in our platted areas, that means less infrastructure to build, at least over the short term. And so, that may have an effect if, we'll see where that comes from, you know, where that study comes from. But that may help fill in those lots and improve the density and aesthetics in the area by naturally having, you know, people move in, people build houses and improve those lots. That's all I have.
Ms. Shipley? One comment for council. With Mr. McGuire's pending resignation, our charter says that it's the duty of city council to appoint a replacement. I'd ask that you give some thought to the mechanism and the options that are open to us because come August 15th, is that the correct date?
Yes.
We will have to take some sort of action.
If I may, Mr. McGuire. Actually, the 15th is on a Sunday, so you guys...
We'll, we'll, well, we don't, we can't take action until there's an actual vacancy. So, it would not be until...
Mr. Mayor, if I could, your charter does provide specific directions to this council. We faced this before. Your charter says that if there's a vacancy, other than recall, which obviously this is not, in any office of council, and that's within, and that were to occur within the last two years of a term of that seat, which this is, then the office shall be filled by appointment within 30 days following the occurrence of such vacancy. August 15th would take you to approximately September 15. So, I just want to make sure that the charter does actually provide for at least a timeframe, if not a specific process, for who you select.
Alluding to the process rather than the practice.
We have, or councils, and previous councils have not done that.
On one occasion.
Okay. How is that possible?
Maybe I've got some history if you would...
Okay, sure.
You know, it's, the concept was at least, and there was a different attorney at the time that did give city council a legal opinion that, yes, you shall, but there are no consequences for not doing so. And the council at that time, as I understand it, before I got here, was more of, and that's what's going to happen this time, because that was the death of a council member in July, just before the election. So, the election was in the process, just like we are now. You go August 15th to September 15th. There's a possibility the seat will be filled in August. The August 30th election day could fill the position. Then it's, in my opinion, moot point, because, you know, then the only logical thing would be to have that person come on board early. If you don't do that, then you're talking two months before...
And, you know, I'm trying to, I'm really struggling with 30 days to receive applications and also recommendations and review those and then do interviews. And then, you know, that's 30 days. I'm thinking, wow, that, you know. And we're going to be, you know, my thought is, this process is going to potentially take us close to October...
Yes.
Before an appointment. And then we're talking four weeks, you know, four or five weeks. And I fear appointing someone for four or five weeks to affect change in city policy for somebody who's not elected and isn't even potentially, not potentially, is not able to run for the seat.
Unless you were to appoint somebody who was...
If they won the, so, whoa, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, I mean, you could appoint a candidate.
Yeah, that's...
Highly not advisable to do that, in my opinion. But that is, I just, you know, there's, you have option, anybody that qualifies.
Yeah, I'm just trying to, I was just trying to figure out how in previous councils didn't appoint. And it's the same timeframe.
It was the same issue.
Yeah.
Preempting the public's right to choose.
Yeah.
It does feel, I mean, just from a common, not a legal standpoint, but from a common sense standpoint, it does feel a little strange to appoint somebody while the voters are in the process of electing somebody. It just, it is a quirk in the charter that, just from a common sense standpoint, doesn't fit.
We probably need a charter review to fix that.
We probably need a charter review to fix that. I'm just saying. I'm just saying.
Saw that train coming.
Yes. Where were we?
Well, if I may, I, I know that, that the city clerk has done some investigation already as far as what has happened in the past, when this event has occurred. This is not the first time this has occurred. I, I would say that, you know, that, really, the charter only provides two, two bits of direction. One is the timing, which we've talked about, and the other says is that the only absolute that you have to do to fill the vacancy is by majority vote. So, you can go through a more specific and, and detailed process receiving applications, but that is, that is certainly not mandated by, by your, by your charter. And then I'll defer to the city clerk, because I know that she already has some, done some research as far as what has happened in the past with prior councils in this situation. Now that I've put you on the spot, Virginia?
2002, 2008, and 2012, council put an ad in the newspaper requesting applications to fill the seats when they became vacant. Within, for one week, council then reviewed the applications received, council ranked them, and then council met with the top five applicants, one-on-one interviews. And then at the next business meeting or a special meeting, in some cases, were, was held, they made the decision on who to put in that vacant seat.
Topic for discussion in our next workshop.
Would you like me to add it to agenda for next workshop?
Sure.
Okay.
Put it on the agenda. Discussion by city attorney of matters not on the agenda.
Just one follow-up, Mr. Mayor, and I just want Mr. McGuire to hear this at a public meeting, but it has been my privilege of working with him and for him for the, the period that I've been the city attorney and that he has been on the city council. My experiences with him have been completely professional, and, and I want to thank him on behalf of my office, and I think I'd be a little presumptive, but on behalf of the citizens of the city of Palm Coast for the service that he, the public service that he has provided. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Discussion by city manager of matters not on the agenda.
Boot Truck Tuesday again this evening here at Central Park, 5:00. Also, we have our annual tour to Palm Coast. It starts at 8:00 at Linear Park. It's a bicycle tour that...
Six and a half miles.
...highlights some of our natural areas along the intercoastal and et cetera. So, and then it is July, which is the Recreation, National Recreation Month. Swimming pool has a lot of activities, have a lot going on out there, so now's a good time to get out and sweat, I guess, outside, huh? Mayor, that's all I have for today.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned. Thank you all.